...here, or I'll be acting chairman. Our chairman cannot be here tonight, understanding his mortal surgery. He downed one of his children and it ran way beyond schedule. So he won't be here and I'm also mental that Mark is under the weather.
But he's on Zoom.
Well, but he's on Zoom. All right, straighten us out and you can if you want, Mark.
I will.
But we do have a forum because we have four members here. So we can start the meeting and the first thing we'll do is do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yep, the next item will be agenda review. Can I take a quick look through it? Does any other member of the board have something they'd like to add or Brian? Is there something came up late?
I, there were several things that had come up late. I, there was one letter of support for the, for board to consider for the Franklin County Field Days. We received another request for level support under the same program for the Friends of the Sisquoy National Wildlife Refuge. Bethany Remmers is going to be on board here to give us an update on the NDU sidewalk. And I'm going to talk briefly on the plan.
All right, Brian. Okay, so we have to add this to the agenda?
Yeah, so if you want to add, under four, then four C would be on the second page of the agenda would be a letter of support for Franklin, for the Friends of Sisquoy Wildlife Refuge. And then we'll give a brief update on stuff that Kathy and I learned today about ARPA. It's something that you've got to do. Is that okay? And then under Old Town Business, put D, NDU Sidewalk Update by Bethany Remmers. Under six, Community and Economic Development, my report would be the Planning Grant. As far as I know, Elizabeth is not going to be joining us. She's also under the weather. And I just, I'll have something for executive session. That's, that's all I got. That's enough. It all came up in the last day.
The only thing that I've got there is, Nicole and I have been working together aimlessly to come up with some suggestions to try to get people to the polls for that informational meeting and the actual vote.
Okay, so you want to put that under New Town Business?
Please.
I'm ready for Nicole.
I think I took my, my only thing.
Mark, do you have anything out there?
I have no additions, thank you.
Okay. All right, next we'll move on to the minutes. We have three different minutes to approve. Do you generally approve them all in one? Or you make, yeah, so we can make a motion for all three at once?
Just as long as they're all the same approval.
What do you mean? Just the all minutes?
Right, but if anyone had any issues with any one.
All right.
I move all.
You move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Additions or things that we might have? Nobody has any comments? Okay, all those in favor then of approving the minutes for March 10th, March 15th, and March 18th? And they're all select board meetings with, one was with the village trustee, one was a regular, and one was a special select board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody to poll?
Aye.
All right, public comment. Anybody have any comments that they're not part of the agenda? We would, would have.
We would, but I don't worry, yes.
All right, then we'll go to law enforcement report and he's chief is here, so. Project, yeah, wherever he wants it.
So for month of March, there were 79 incidents that Swan Village Police Department responded to in the town. Again, this is the way the system pulls the data out, out of those incidents. We're looking at the incident analysis summary with the top 10 incident types. 29, but it was actually 31 of those were traffic, two of them were flagged as D W O, so that was a full traffic stop also. So 31 incidents for traffic stops. Eight citizen assists, seven suspicious persons circumstances, six agency assist, four citizen disputes, formative vehicle complaints, four community outreach calls, three alarms, three welfare checks, and two juvenile crimes. Looking at, if you break down the incidents, because there were 31 traffic stops out of those 79 incidents, that's roughly 39% of incidents, just for the sake of comparison, just thinking about Burlington incidents and the traffic enforcement that goes on there, I think last year, for the entire year, 2.5% of the incidents Burlington responded to was roughly traffic enforcement related. Out of the traffic enforcement, 18 were related to speed. There were a lot of warnings issued. But out of those speed-related incidents, 17 of the 18 were 1 to 10 miles per hour over. I found something similar when I was driving out towards the wildlife refuge one day running radar that most of the vehicles that I was picking up were in the 50s. We got one in the 60s that I couldn't flip around to even stop her due to the nature of the traffic flow. There was one that was in the 11 to 20 mile per hour over range in those traffic enforcement incidents. And I think we're trending in the right direction as comparing the January incidents. About 15% of the incidents from January were traffic enforcement related. In February, about 28% of the incidents we handled in the town were traffic enforcement related. And now we're up to 39%. I do have some staffing additions to report. We have onboarded the three new employees that we have in the pipeline. Two Level Three Pre-Certified Officers who were Burlington officers who left Burlington, I want to say, last July. And we hired one, we hired them both as part-timers, one decided that he wanted to come up full-time. We've hired Tyler Paddo as a sergeant position in the Swan Village Police Department, so he's been a great addition.
That's not a new position though, that's just killing somebody else's.
Correct, correct. So it was a vacant lieutenant's position that we filled in the sergeant.
Don't you have Steve working that?
He's working in the tenant's old shift, so that 06 to 2 in the afternoon shift. At Sunday, it's a little different, I want to say it's 9 to 5 Sunday, but Monday, Thursday at 6:00 AM. And he should sit down about, he was sitting out about. He's done a few patrols also, which I think kept the residents off guard. We were asking him what he was doing. He said, oh, I'm walking around the neighborhood. So that was, that was new to them also, so that was good. We did have actually a pretty interesting ATV incident yesterday. We had a couple guys, three individuals who decided to rip around the village and through the town, up the front road. And we were able to figure out who those individuals were, so there's going to be some traffic enforcement related to those violations. We also have, and I've been speaking with President Gilmat about this littering issue that's been going on out in town. So we are going to take enforcement action on that also.
So you have, you found, yeah?
We do, at least, at least one of the individuals involved, which is consistent with I think the majority of the problem that's been experienced by the town over the last year or year plus. So we will take enforcement action at least. If, looking at this report here, so just so you're aware, pages one through three are the incidents. And there's a couple different views of these incidents. So the first one is the summary view, it's nice and consolidated. Pages four through 10 are the incidents, the same incidents in a different version of that presentation. So they look a little different, it's March incidents on the top of that. And then page 11 in this packet are the arrests, there were three arrests to be lie, one LSA arrest for the month. And page 12 is the arrests again, in just the different presentations that the current system pulls out. And then pages 13 through 14 are traffic incidents, tickets and warnings. And 15 through 19 are those same traffic incidents. Again, there were, out of those, I counted 26 warnings, which is 81% of those traffic contacts. And six tickets issued, or 19% of those traffic contacts resulted in tickets being issued.
On the traffic, I'm seeing lots of Alberg, not just town of Swan, I'm seeing Alberg with calls as well. Is there a reason why there's an increased presence in Alberg?
It may be related to Stone Garden if it's, if it's in there. So, because there are some traffic stops when the officer's doing Stone Garden detail, so they were specifically patrolling that area. That, that is most likely why. I know Sunday I was coming through, I did see the Stone Garden car out in Alberg. So most likely that is why you're seeing those incidents reported.
I'm sure a lot of people, you know, I don't know either. What, what does this Stone Garden you call it?
Yeah, so the Stone Garden detail is a, a grant detail that the federal government funds. And essentially what it is, is we're patrolling the border, specifically assisting CBP or another set of eyes. So for example, CBP normally has, I want to say, in excess of 130 officers assigned to the Swan sector. And now they're down considerably. I want to say they may be in the 30s due to deploying resources to the southern border. So what Stone, Stone Garden's been going on for many, many years, it's existed for many years. And what it is, is it allows local law enforcement to go up and patrol the border. And they're specifically looking for drug smuggling activities and human trafficking activities with illegal border crossings. So if they see something suspicious as they're patrolling the border, they will call CBP and alert CBP. And then CBP is the one that actually takes action on, on those incidents. But they may, in the course of patrol, find a traffic violation and they may stop a car that's reflected in that traffic stop data.
Mr. Chair.
What's that?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, well, I understand Stone Garden, that was going on back in my days as police commissioner. But it was very unusual, you had to stop in Rouse's Point, New York.
That, yeah, you know what, and I didn't pull that up to look at it. My guess is that, I, I would have to look at it to know for sure why that's flagged as that. I know, I know SRO Cleary lives over in New York, so he's traveling that direction quite often, but that is a good question.
I may have started in Vermont.
It may have, it followed him.
But in the 15 years I was police commissioner, that happened once, that's why I was just curious.
No, that's a good question. I will have to look into that for it.
Mark has a question. Mark?
Yeah, but again, Chief, for this Stone Garden, are, is there time that they're over there, is that further than town? Hours that were allocated during the week? How does that work?
No, it doesn't. It is completely separate. So what happens is if officers are on a day off, they can sign up for the Stone Garden details, which are managed by CBP. And so the officers, it would be a normal day off, so it has nothing to do with the patrols that are assigned to the town. And in that sense, both Stone Garden and the Governor's Highway Safety Program or Sharp Detail are a force multiplier for the Swan Village Police Department, because it allows us to put more officers out in the field that we would not normally have on shift. And it's not coming out of the village or the town's contract.
But maybe, Mark, go ahead, you got more?
No, but they do.
Maybe that shouldn't be in the town.
I think it's the way again it pulls the data, so I'm just searching. I'm searching town specifically, so there's areas and we have both the village and the town. So I'm not sure why Valfor is pulling that, similar to the Rouse's Point incident, why it's pulling it out as town, but, but it did.
Well, it's supposed to be out of the, well, I guess we're all with computers. We just get it figured out. All right, answered by, does any other question?
Other than you? Otherwise everything's good.
Yes, yeah, it's good. It's, it's very good. And, you know, onboarding these, these additional employees are good, because we had some part-timers leave. We had the full-timers leave. We are at full staffing at this point.
Good.
So it's, it's good all.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go home, enjoy your family. Have a good night. You too. We got a health officer report?
There is no health officer report. She knows something.
She's under the order out there?
All right, well, I was going to deviate from the agenda anyways, because Jim Hubbard just came in. And at this point in time, we're going to recognize him for all his years of service to the town. And I was, I would have said that Ed was going to take the lead in this.
We'll try, we'll try anyway. There's a book that I read many years ago by Hillary Clinton. And she stated how it took a village to educate a child. And I, the Clintonists sat going thinking, I wonder how many people have worked with Jim over his 25 years in the town. I read back at a few books, just took a rough figure. I figure I've worked with about 100 people since 1972, '77. So maybe double that figure, Jim, and you probably get a couple 100 people. And it's the people that make the community. I met my first Hubbard about 70 years ago, when I had my paper roll. And what a blessing it was to have met her. As most of you know, we lived way up on Canada Street. We went all the way up on Spring Street downtown and up to the railroad tracks on Grand Avenue, then we headed for home. What a blessing it was when Elviker moved in, two houses from the tracks up there on that point. Because every night in the middle of the winter, she'd be looking out the window. That door would open and she grabbed me over the back of my coat. You will sit right there. You got to finish up. You will leave here when I say you can leave. You're going to warm up first. And I always remember her for that. And she would inquire about the family and all of that. And the Hubbard's have always been a caring family here for the community. They've all, each generation has made a contribution in their own way. Jimmy's aunt, uncle, his grandparents have all made a contribution in one way or another. And he's continued with his own family. At school, I can remember many times the kids would come up, where's the coach? Get a cop, talk to the coach. Or they'd go to another player, say, I'm trying to do this on the ice, but it doesn't work. Older kids would say, go see the coach, he'll show you what to do. The next day, hey, I can do it. Or even his sons, they'd say, can you help me? Sure, I'll go help you with that. So it's a family that's continued to make a tremendous contribution to us here over the years. 25 years of it, that's pretty damn good. I can see where it would get on your nerves every so often. But anyway, we want to thank you, Jim, for everything that you've done. If you'll give this to your wife, because she's off enjoying the warm weather at a school function tonight. And for you, Jim, we have a little plaque here that is presented to Jim Hubbard, Councilman, Planning Commission, 1995, 2022. Thank you for your service.
I think I started planning the year before, but I moved on to other things. Congratulations, it's a pleasure working with you.
Jim Pratt couldn't be here. He wanted me to tell you it was an honor to work with you. Well, all great people. Swan's a great community. Our family settled here in the late 1700s and we've always tried to give back. Certainly, that's what I was taught by my father and what I've taught my, my family and I'm sure many generations before. That's what makes this community so special is we still have those families that have invested here for years and years. And it's great to work with those people. And like I've always said, the, the people that moved and settled here, families that have settled here over the last 50 years have always received a warm welcome from our community. And we welcome the growth of our community and those families that have chosen to live here. There's nobody place on earth, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some people that I educated myself in this room, so, you know, nothing I can do in the future. I'm trying to semi-retire, but I was working on a baseball field till about 30 minutes ago.
You still have your name, Clint.
Don't let it get rusty.
One day, yeah, one day, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I guess on behalf of the town, because I'm acting as chairman tonight, well, thank you for your years of service. It's not an easy thing to do. Swan is a pretty good community to live in. A lot of it has to do with the planning that's been done over the years, and you've been instrumental in that. And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Me as well, Kevin, from a fun year for sure.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yes, yeah.
Before Jimmy leaves, I didn't have the pleasure to work with Jimmy for too many years. I've only been on DRB for like four years, I believe, can't even correctly run on there. But one of the reasons why I got on DRB is I knew the caliber of the planning commission. And I wish I had more years to work with Jimmy. Always respected him. Seeing him out on the baseball field coaching the kids and what he gives back to this community is phenomenal. But I just want to congratulate Jimmy as well for all his years, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we got any other comments on the Zoom?
Thank you very much, Robbo.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Do you have, putting that together? Okay, I guess the next thing under new business is a letter of support for the Franklin County Field Days. And you can give us a brief description of what this is all about, Ryan?
Okay, Franklin County Field Days, you know, may not know. I've been looking for a new home. The airport, which is owned by the state, in which they've been located. They, they have to move due to some FAA changes and regulations and whatnot, and expansion at the airport. And so they're looking for a new home and able to do that, they're looking for a permanent home, so they're looking to buy it, they'll say. And they're, most of their buildings and infrastructure, they built new. And so there's a congressional program that Senator Sanders is accepting requests from, as well as Senator Leahy, it's called the congressionally directed spending request. And they're seeking a grant from Senator Sanders as well as Senator Leahy, hoping that one of them gets approved. But Senator Sanders' office requires a letter of support from various organizations and agencies. And so they asked Elizabeth, who's doing the grant request, Elizabeth Nance. And she asked that the town of Swanton would sign this support letter, which we've been sent an email previously. And the final product is here this evening, so I can get people to sign.
They're still on a city close within this?
Yeah, oh yes, it'd be in this area, yeah. They're looking close, but they have to look, they're looking for sandy soil. So that if there is a downpour, it goes right into the ground and does not provide, or cause any problems. Cars getting stuck and whatever, so, yes, they're looking in this, this area.
Yes, so we need a, a motion, or, and then somebody want to make a motion? We can have a discussion after we make the motion.
Sure, I, I'm making a motion to sign the letter of support for Franklin County Field Days.
I second that motion.
Okay, did you have something you wanted to say? All right, then, Mark, did you have anything?
No, I'm fine with signing it, just hopefully that we can find a home close to Swanton or this one.
All right, then, all those in favor of signing this letter of support for Franklin County Field Days? Say a yay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody's polled, so the motion carries and we will sign it. And I have everybody's signature tonight, but.
Right, but we'll, we'll get it taken care of. And just, there is a deadline, this is going to be in by the 8th, as Elizabeth told me. So we got a little time, because Higgy's not doing theirs until tomorrow, so.
Probably be game coming tomorrow.
Yeah.
What about you, Mark? Did you get game here before Friday?
I'm here.
Yes, okay.
Now, we got one more letter before, right?
That's right. This one is from the Friends of the Sisquoy National Wildlife Refuge. Under the same program, they are making a request to Senator Sanders' office to do some significant upgrades to the Discovery Trail on the refuge that is of course located in Swanton. The Discovery Trail passes through the habitats located on the wildlife refuge. And it's the only trail they have that has the potential of being wheelchair accessible. And so they're in hopes to get this grant.
Where's the trailhead on that? Is that right at the old refuge?
It starts at the refuge, I believe, the visitor center. And so we, you know, they, as we all know, the refuge is of course a valued part of our town, greatly appreciated by residents and visitors alike. And this will certainly open it up to everyone, to a lot more people be able to enjoy it. So that's, this letter is briefer, but it's the same thing.
Same scenario.
Yeah.
Well, I make the motion that we sign the letter of support for the Friends of the Sisquoy Wildlife Refuge as well.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
I think it's the.
Yes, it does fit in with, you know, if we're going to have a little more value rail traffic. I mean, it's, when they do something 78, I mean, it's, could be a big thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, is there, you got anything in comments, Mark?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, well, then, all those in favor of signing that letter of intent for the Sisquoy Wildlife, say aye.
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 Nobody to poll, so the motion carries. And we will sign that tonight. All right, now we had a couple other new things in there, right?
Yeah. Which one, ARPA?
ARPA.
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 Okay, really quick and easy, I think. There's been, there was a webinar today. I listened to the first half. Kathy listened to the second half, because it was all how all this stuff is going to be accounted for.
I listened to the whole thing. I listened to the whole thing too.
The, the bottom line is, we can take a standard. Um, the, um, uh, the bottom line is, uh, we can take a standard exemption or a standard deduction of ten million dollars. And so that will allow us great flexibility. Any community does have great flexibility in what we spend the money on, okay? There are some things that we can't spend it on if it seems to be not ethical or it seems to be illegal naturally, of course. We shouldn't be spending money on it. Um, and, uh, but you have to, uh, the board has to have a motion and make a motion that they accept and do the standard ten million dollar deduction. And, um, uh, that has to be, we have a form that has to be filled out electronically. Kathy has been working with that. Uh, and that has to be entered by the twentieth of April, so, um, that's what this is, give us the standard. And that's the way to go, really.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you, if we do this standard thing, the standard ten million dollars, then there's not much limitation on how we use that funding. As long as it's done legally and morally ethical.
You know, you can't make a pension contribution to it. You can't pay off debt, but, um.
I think, was that one of the questions today, if they could pay off debt in the seminar?
Oh, the first part, they said you couldn't pay off.
Yeah. Okay. No, there was a thing, answered that in the end.
Yeah.
But they.
I think it said it was a no.
No.
But pretty much you can use it for just about anything else.
So you can build that with it.
You but you can also use it as a match. If you if you're getting another federal grant, you can use this money as a, your matching requirement, which most of the time that was always prohibited.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, it's a lot less, like, there's a lot more flexibility and you don't have to do one report a year.
And I believe someone did ask if they could build a new town garage with it and they were told, yes, they can.
So, the, oh, my take, from my understanding, and please correct me if the two of you heard it differently, is that the taking the standardized deduction allows us to to recuperate revenue that was lost.
That's right.
And that's presumed by the Treasury that it's a, everybody has lost that amount of revenue.
So you're assuming that because of the pandemic, the town lost so much money, so we can take a portion of that and do it, put it back in our general fund or do whatever we want.
Well, no, there's a.
Yeah.
There's a protocol to it. You can decide between now and December of two thousand and twenty-four, how you're going, you're anticipating what you're going to spend them. You can do work, but you have to have it earmarked for something by two thousand and twenty-four. And anything you earmark it for, you have to have it completed by two thousand and twenty-six. So you can.
The better way to put this, so people understand, and I want to make sure our understanding is, we cannot use this, use this money to lower the tax rate.
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
It has to be on some kind of improvement.
Right, it's gotta be, right, and there there is a list, um, on there. They just opened it up much wider. Things you can use it on. It was, it before it was very definite, there was definite items, categories you could use the money only on. But now they've done this standard exemption that opened it up a lot for the ten million of a lot, basically is what it is.
And I was at another, um, webinar, apparently, um, when it first came out with those other restrictions, um, uh, the Treasury Department heard from, I would assume, people's congressmen, congresswomen, that, hey, this is too restrictive, and so they, uh, they loosened up the restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, uh, this is gonna create a lot of work for us. I've always said there's advantages to being poor. You don't have to worry about money. Now we got all this money, we've got to come up with some kind of plan of how we're gonna.
Well, you make, right, you make a plan and the the reporting of it, even though we don't have to report so often, you really have to really track and note and keep track of, make sure you're doing. It has to be like, almost like a continuing history sheet on the whole, what you're doing with the money and the reason why you're doing it. And any backup documentation still has to be kept because at the end, that whole file of our progress through this whole thing has to be delivered to the powers that be in the end.
Yeah.
Well, uh, and I believe that in order for us to do this right, it's gonna take a considerable amount of community input. And that's something that we're gonna have to really work on, you know.
Yeah, that, uh, with the last meeting here, where we talked about this, I think, and doing something in May for that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that will, and it will kind of go into the next piece on the agenda. Adam is the the communications of of how to get people more engaged.
Right, I mean, that's on here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's that's the whole, I mean, we want, we really need the community input for things like this.
The other thing is, I mean, if we're gonna have, if we're planning on something in May, maybe, uh, I wouldn't get too into the summertime because it's, there's no COVID anymore. Everybody's gonna be doing the things they wanted to do for the last two years. But if we do this in May, we should have some kind of, I don't know, some of our, not necessarily ideas, but maybe some of the needs here. Uh, that we know are here, so, you know, when the community putting their input in, you know, we got, we can present something to them that, you know, we feel might have to be done, you know.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we can take your input at the same time, but, you know, I, I don't know how productive a meeting would be if we just go in there and say, hey, how much money do we got? And that's the thing, how much money do we have?
Right now.
Yeah, but not right then. How much are we gonna end up with?
Oh, I think like, I think we're supposed to get like another four hundred thousand if I'm right, so it's gonna be like a million dollars in the end. Right now we have six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen, I think.
And you're expecting another four hundred thousand?
That's what they said.
Because the counties in every other state, the counties got money, okay? Vermont has really no county level of government, so that's getting split up.
Yeah.
Dispersed in individual communities.
Just until we get a, it's.
By population, those are compilations. That's, um, oh, we haven't gotten a final figure with that.
No, that's why it's kind of, I say a million, but I really don't, don't quote me on it, because it.
So it's, um.
Yeah, how much money? The village must be right close to that.
Well, it's by population, so.
Does Reg know how much they got?
Reg, do you know what the village is?
Yeah, yeah, overall, I think it's gonna be just, uh, right around seven hundred thousand after we get the second half. So it's three hundred, I think we have three hundred and eighty thousand right now.
Well, quite interesting for sure, uh. But it's gonna be, it's gonna create a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
But I I definitely think that by taking this standard deduction that they're recommending is is the way. It will save work and it will allow us to to use the money for leverage on other grants that we might be applicable for and.
All right, so you said, Ryan, that the board has to approve using the standard deduction.
Right, so just a motion thing.
So we have to have a motion that.
That are plus standard exemption.
That's, I believe, is all we need to do. Maybe a form later to sign, but we haven't seen one yet, so.
Well.
Just refer back.
Ed, you wanna make a motion?
I do make a motion, a motion that we approve the standard deduction.
I will second.
Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any more discussion? Mark, did you have anything?
I know, but I think more, I think this really opens it up a little bit more for us to do. We have some planning to do on our part. And I think we can certainly try a little bit of action side on it for the community.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I do, I do have one more question. Now, when we accepted those funds, the the administrator, was that you or was that the acting town administrator at the time, if you recall? I couldn't find my notes on it.
Um, actually, I think it might have been David, but I went in today and I had started the process because he was one, I was one. So I went in today and started, started the process of getting, you have to do your identification out there. So that, that's all done. So now, I went in because there's some forms they said to print out first, for you online to print them out. But I can't, couldn't locate where to print them out. It just said everything was blank. So I'm gonna call tomorrow and ask them where exactly on that portal I can find those forms to print out.
If it was David, can we make sure that it gets updated to be our kind?
Yeah, because we have, I think, basically, um, we do have to do two people, so.
Right, so I'll have, yeah, they opt to supply them all the identification information and everything, so.
Yeah, and that's part of the package that I need to get downloaded to print out, because they said it's best to print it out and fill it all out and then go in and fill it in. Instead, it goes much quicker and smoother.
All right.
I just gotta get it to print out and I can't.
It won't print.
It tells me I have nothing there to do anything with, so I figure I call tomorrow.
Yeah, and then we'll get.
Details, yeah.
Okay, so the motion has been made that we, uh, approve using the, uh, ten million dollar standard.
Standard deduction.
Standard deduction. Ten million dollars, standard deduction. I do that every day. Okay, every, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so nobody's opposed, the motion carried. Now, I guess we'll go on to, uh, the cannabis vote. That's new business, right? That's a discussion that we wanted to have.
Communications to get, uh, to get the information about the informational meeting out and, uh, information on how to get more residents engaged in the voting process. Um, Ben and I have sat and and talked about, uh, some digital media strategies, about sharing some information. Um, this current week when we took the time to share, um, just given the agenda, we had about thirteen hundred views on the agenda itself. Um, very similar to the Cemetery Commission, um, their agenda, we had close to that. So, you know, we are getting a a large following, but we're still not hitting every, every inch of town, you know, every resident. Not everybody is doing social media, um, so look, looking for ways that maybe you might find information and how, how we can target people that don't do social media.
Yeah, I'm the, I I know, I'm the old guy, see? I I do know the old way to do it. Your social media, though, I think if you're getting thirteen hundred, I think that's pretty, pretty good.
Oh, I was happy, but.
Yeah.
Like Nicole says, there's, there's far more out there to to reach out to.
Now, are you specifically putting something out on this vote?
I have not yet because, um, you know, I, I, when I'm posting on the town's behalf, I'd like to talk it over with all of you to make sure that the information that I'm putting out there is something that we all agree is a representation of the town.
Right.
Um, but I did create just a small little graphic, um, basically an invitation to the community to invite them to the informational meeting. Um, and I can show it to you. I shared it with Ed already and I can share it with Mark and James when we're not here.
I shared it with Brian, yeah.
Um, and it's, it's very basic. It just says, hello, hey, Swanton, join town and village officials for a joint informational meeting for the special vote happening on April twenty-sixth, um, and then information about the meeting, um, as soon as we get it.
Oh, you gotta hit another button?
Nope, this is just.
Oh, okay, so you want, you're gonna put more here after our discussion tonight?
This is just a five, well, if if this is something that we all agree on, then I will post it. Um, but I didn't want to do that without.
Okay, I mean, language, uh, in there, you know, what were you planning on putting for language? Just that we were gonna have a vote on.
Just that we were getting.
To allow the sale of cannabis in the town of Swanton.
Sure.
Yeah, you'd have to put something like that, that for sure.
To let them know what the meeting is about.
Yes. You know, uh, I don't have a problem doing that whatsoever. I think you you've got to do it today, unfortunately.
Well, the big thing is, Earl, that I've seen, um, of course, as I've made, the more aware of it along, uh, you know, I I do it on, well, I I observe the the social media, Facebook, and, uh, I, uh, I, you know, I shared this thing that's important to the residents of Swanton to get out there and vote. And, um, of course, there's, there's always gonna be some negativity, but I firmly believe, and like I shared with Nicole today, when we met, the people that, uh, were getting the negative from haven't done their homework. The the biggest thing that I've gotten, I don't know what Nicole's got for Mark, but every, every comment that has come back to me personally has been the fear that, okay, we have, I mean, we openly know we have a drug problem in Swanton. And the people that aren't educated believe that this is gonna bring more drug problems in Swanton. Which all the statistics that that we got from the gentleman with our last meeting, that's, it's the opposite.
That's true, yeah.
So like I said to Nicole, first most, we we've gotta, we've gotta come up with a way to get the people to that informational meeting. And I I firmly believe if we can, if we can win the battle there, I I don't think there's gonna be a problem with with it getting voted in.
Yeah.
But the problem that we have right now is there's too many people that are uneducated, they're not doing their fact finding, and therefore, they're just, no.
Well, you gotta understand, this can be, this will be controversial, to a certain extent. It could be really controversial, might be just out.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Uh, people that are passionate on both sides, uh, you know, and I have my own thoughts on it. And to be honest with you, I'd rather not have to deal with it. But we're gonna have to deal with it at some point in time.
Yep.
Uh, you know, and the requests have been made to the town, and I think that might be the place to start. You know, and the requests have been made because there's someone interested in starting one of these stores in Swanton on Merchant Row.
And well, and then there's more than just.
I mean, let's not keep anything, you know, and let's not try to hide anything that's going on because that's basically the reason why we're voting on it.
Well, and but there's more opportunities than just a retail storefront once it comes to the community.
That's right, I understand.
And that's what we're hoping to educate people on at the informational meeting is, is all of the benefits that welcoming this type of business into our community could possibly bring here. Um, and so just really encouraging everybody to come to that meeting to to get information, whether they agree with it or not, um, or share information that they may or may not have and and then to come back and vote. Um, I really would love to see more of a voter turnout for this vote.
So, on the goal, the only other question that I want, uh, are you out tonight? So are we gonna, are we gonna, uh, because if I understood you right, what we, what we want to do, Earl, is we want to vote flyers. I'm gonna, you know, I I'm, I'm free to go around and and put them out to businesses and put them on the windshield of cars and so on and so forth.
I think that's a really good idea, creating up the stores and stuff like that.
Right, so I want to share with you, that's what our plan is.
Something along the lines of this.
It would be the same thing as that.
Right, with just a little bit more information about.
You're gonna add some stuff in here.
Right, with the information about what the vote is on.
Yeah.
And to invite people to join us for the informational meeting.
Yep.
And I still feel strongly that you could put down there, it's because the town has been approached for a possible use. You know, and one of the uses would be the sale of, I ain't calling cannabis anymore either, pop, okay? Uh, because that's what it is, uh.
Well, that is one.
Because I don't want, I don't want people coming into that meeting saying, hey, you guys are trying to get somebody down there. How come you, you know? And that's not necessarily the reason we're, I mean, it is sort of the reason why it is. We're, we are doing it for that reason right now. Because would we have done this had nobody approached us?
That's a good question.
Good question.
I I can answer that.
Very good question.
So, we know why we're doing it. So when people ask us why we're doing it, we should tell them why we're doing it.
And we tell them on the flyer or we wait and tell them that the information will be there?
Say that, you know, we have approached, that a business would like to be established here in Swanton. And because it's on Merchant Row, it should say Merchant Row, because, you know, it's not gonna be on the back forty, it's gonna be right in the middle of the town.
I agree.
Mark, hey, then we got Gordon, are you on? Are you, you could have been this down there. What do you think?
Yeah, this is Mark. Um, I'm all for putting the information out there as a flyer to the community to get voters in. I would be cautious as a select board member to be placing flyers on people's cars. Um, and I I'm hesitant to advertise that it's coming to the the Merchant Row because that is village and we're representing the town. Uh, so it could be anywhere that that could be coming. I mean, yes, it's the reason it started it, but I would just be hesitant, that's all, that's me. I'm all for a flyer, putting it on social media and maybe even the newspaper to get people to vote and understand the facts either way they vote, but, um, I I just be. Um I I just be very cautious of some of the wording that we put on there, that's all.
So I'll create a draft and email it to everybody, um and the sooner you can get back to me, the sooner I can execute it and we'll get it out there.
You have some input, Gordon?
Were you asking me something, or?
Yeah, we wanted to know, I mean, you have a business down there, uh you know.
Uh, my opinion on the score, my opinion on how you're gonna advertise it?
That, wow, whoa. Make it short.
I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to put anything you want up in the store, I agree with Mark, you know, I would uh, I'd be careful. Sometimes putting stuff on people's windshield doesn't uh, doesn't get conceived the right way, so I would be cautious of who you have doing that. And uh as far as the, the actual uh sale of cannabis, you know, I I certainly hope that uh we learn more about it, I don't know that I'm. For it or against it, you know, I'm certainly happy to listen, but I I, you know, I hope we are able to listen, like, when they say they get two or three percent of. A certain revenue that we actually have a projection of what that is, and not just that we're uh saying we get two or three percent of the. Revenue of the sale, I hope that whatever expert we have there will be able to uh enlighten us of what he might think that the actual. Revenue coming to Swan is before we uh. Before we vote, and so everyone will have an education about exactly what that is, and also in uh any um adverse effects that other. Communities have had when they've uh brought this into their town, so I'm, I'm all for listening and I'm certainly not forming an opinion, I just hope that. I hope that the expert that comes gives us some idea when they say property values go up, when they say uh. Crime goes down, when they say crime goes down, does that mean just because they've decriminalized marijuana and now crime is down because of that and. Cause certainly, if, if that's the fact and uh. Uh some of the theft stops going on in downtown Swan and other areas, I'm, I'm all for listening.
Well, thank you for your input.
Yeah, no, I just think that's important, that we listen, you know, we we've, we've heard a lot that the, that uh about. Why we want it, because of the growth in downtown, and we want it because of the tax revenues in downtown, and I just, I would love to hear uh. Some facts about what that actually is and some hard numbers of maybe what they're projecting here in downtown, and if it's, if it's good, I'm all for it.
Well, thank you Gordon, because uh you know, those questions are the questions that we're gonna be asking before to try to have an answer for that meeting. And it may be going out in that flyer, if we can get the answers quick enough. So if you have some idea of what this is, you know, and is gonna have, what what effect it's gonna have, at least from a tax standpoint and. Uh crime standpoint, but.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm honestly, I'm all, I'm all ears, cause uh anything we can do to uh generate good traffic into our community is, is good, so I would just, but I just, I, I'm. Cautiously optimistic to hear some concrete evidence and not just my property values will go up fifteen percent and crime will go down, I would just like to hear. How that, how we arrive at that.
Yeah, well, when it sounds too good to be true, it is.
I said, you said, you said to be sure, I wasn't really sure.
All right, thank you. Uh any comments from the? Yo.
I, it's gonna be interesting, I, I too need to get brought up to speed and hear the real facts and stuff, so certainly will attend to informational meetings and stuff, uh. You know, I hear the village, everybody in the village is part of the town, so it affects everybody, the whole licensing of that and stuff, uh. It'd be very interesting, cause a lot of hard feelings one way or another, and let's all get brought up to speed and make a sound decision.
And I mean, just, there's another. Another issue here is the village residents could vote to uphold their town meeting day vote, and the town could vote for it, and then they would not be able to. From what I understand, we wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be able to locate within the village limit.
That's correct.
A lot needs to be out there too, so you know, everybody understands what's going on.
Ideally, if uh. Whichever way it would go, both the town and the village vote the same way.
Right.
Is the ideal situation, but you know, it's, it's up to the voters. But that is true, I mean, if um uh that vote in the village has to stand, if it's voted.
Well, we're gonna put something together, uh the other thing, get back to what I, I believe that the select board itself should. Probably put a letter out to the, all the papers now, I'm talking Messenger, the Courier, and the Islander. And apparently the Messenger don't like us anymore. Cause they don't put much Swan stuff in here, they did before, but it's even less now, but I mean, if, we gotta put something out there, I think, you know. And how do you wanna say that we're gonna, the other thing is, I haven't really discussed it, is are we in favor as a board, we never had a motion, or did we last?
Yes, we did, we were in favor of it.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. All right, that's, then then that's, you know, we'll put down, you know, we're gonna have to put together something that's gonna follow along with this. And put it out there, and then do the social media thing.
Who did you get you a smart? Who did you get you a smart?
Me?
Yeah. I don't think you'll accept it.
All right, I got, I got enough, probably. So, I, I guess who's gonna be responsible to get all this stuff done, we, what's our timeline?
What's uh twenty first, so you got a little over two weeks.
That's for the informational meeting.
Information.
And the vote is on the twenty sixth.
Two is three weeks from tonight, or today.
All right, so we got to get something out, but I mean, it'd be nice if we had it done by the end of this week, I suppose, but. We're gonna have to look up some of them things, I don't know if you get any information from the, the guy that was here that night, you know.
Yeah, he was supposed to send it, and I haven't seen it.
I, I sh- I shared a lot of information with you guys via email, and I printed it out for you, because I know you don't like email.
Yeah. Okay, cause. All right, does it give you numbers in there, potential, no?
Not, not in regards to Swan itself, but it talks just about it local impacts of what commercial cannabis does for communities. That particular, they're withholding, and that, that's a Vermont.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna buy the Messenger on the way home, but I won't, so I can read this.
Okay.
And I'll get some comments into either you or Brian.
I'll be pretty tied up this week, doing my way through.
All right, so wow, this week and a little bit of next week.
Mark is looking to chime in.
Mark?
Yeah, um for me, I just be cautious of putting facts that were not solid of, I'm in favor of the flyer to say, hey. The informational is here, come get the facts whether you're for or against it. Uh come hear the information before you vote, try to stay away from some of the, the facts, cause at least in our area, there really isn't any, we're going off state that maybe. Cities are different crime rates or whatever than ours, but I would, I'd push more for the information to come vote and hear the information that's gonna be presented to us. As well as them, that's all.
But, you know, that's okay, but if you ask that question, are we gonna answer it, or say no comment?
I think it's over the time, we're gonna have. Do we really know the facts? If somebody asked me, I would tell them I don't know the facts, that's why I'm going to the meeting.
I think really promote, promoting, promoting the informational meeting is the key.
Right, yeah.
Then it's, the informational meeting, they know there's gonna be a vote, I think really just promoting, getting people to attend that informational meeting is your key thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can get there and get the information, I think.
If you give them too much information, they're not gonna come to the informational.
Right, so I think just promoting that meeting is your best option.
You know, we're not gonna get the mass there.
Right.
Most of the people that are gonna end up voting are gonna have picked the information up.
Well, and to be honest with you, we already have, Diane from the village has already mailed out over. Close to two hundred ballots, and we've quote, we've done almost three hundred ballots, so the ballots are already gone out and they're already coming back in. So those people have voted, will probably have voted before even the information.
We're getting more people than we had till meeting day already.
We had.
We got three hundred?
We had two hundred and some, no, town meeting day, we had more than that, we had a few more, we had two hundred, I'm gonna ask you for numbers, I think two hundred and seventy seven absentee ballots.
And you've already sent out many?
We've gotten, we're close to, we're probably close to three hundred.
So you've already, they've already asked for more than they did at town meeting day?
And a lot of it has to do with people are traveling too. Are leaving now, like we've, we've had a few more for people are gonna be out of town that normally would be here to vote, so it is absorbing some of the normal people, but.
Well.
And they're also, they're also going for the school vote, remember the school budget?
Right, the school budget too, yeah.
Oh, that's right, the school vote, people get forgotten, all right, yo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just got a quick question if I could, so if you're gonna have an informational meeting. I wasn't here and I didn't see the video of someone who spoke, but who, who always gonna provide the information?
I think that gentleman is coming again.
Who's, who's the gentleman, is he a representative of the state, a representative of the federal government?
No, he's.
Someone who's interested in himself.
He's software, isn't he? He's in the business. He's in the business.
He's in the business now, that's why I'm asking, are you gonna bring somebody out, or are you just gonna have someone there who's in it because they want it to succeed here?
Oh, I'm gonna get done, um is Reg still on?
No.
Oh, that's.
I don't know, yo.
I, that's, that's, I'm just asking for, you know, you folks to think about that, because you need someone who's gonna be impartial, putting facts out to the community. Not just the person who's, who's trying to get the business here, and I, I, I can't say yes or no right now, cause I just don't know. But when I hear that, that just someone's gonna be there, like someone just mentioned a car salesman, this is the person.
Careful, yo, careful.
Yeah.
Lots of car salesmen there. Anyway.
Yep, but yeah, you, you, it's a very valid point, I mean, uh you know, that's why I'm saying that, that we should try to. Get some of these answers in an unbiased way, because I agree with you, that guy's in the business, you know, uh everything's gonna be. Good, uh we know it can't be all that good, nothing is, uh so. I don't know, how do we approach this, and then you got, you know, Mark, with the resident off say, but if we have information we know is fairly accurate. I think, you know, people are entitled to know that, and I believe they should know it upfront. So they under, you know, that's gonna create some interest or, or not.
Nicole, you got any other ideas on? Somebody else that we could invite to that informational meeting?
I mean. The, that's a.
Where did this come from?
The internet, it came from a, it came from an agency out of Washington DC who deals with controversial issues like this.
Okay, so they, so they're uh non, they're.
Correct.
Non.
Non biased.
Non biased.
Non biased.
Yeah.
Good. Uh. I'm definitely gonna have to look at this, you know, and walk them, but uh. I would, some, this might be very helpful. You know, go ahead, yo.
Vermont League of City and Towns, I mean, this has gotta be something that's being asked in many of the wrong communities. They're maybe ask somebody, there's a lot of states where this is legal.
Yeah.
It'd be a town administrator, or a select board person, or whatever the equivalent is, assemblyman or something, that someone could talk to and say. You're selling cannabis now, tell us about it, crime rates down, gave you money? What do you think of that? I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I'm going to an informational meeting, I'm gonna be asking all these questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's some of the stuff that that gentleman put out.
That, that you need, and then partial variety though.
I'm, I can sort of look into other resources and generate a list and then, and then put it down with the consensus to see like.
To get people by.
I don't really get more.
Okay, Gordon has a question.
Gordon?
Oh, sorry, there, so I, I think I was just, uh, I was raising my hand before Joel, but just uh following up on what he said, I was gonna ask Nicole. If, if the expert, I, I assume the expert had done a study on Swan, so that's not true, like, we don't, we don't have. Like revenue estimates, uh tax, uh s- uh revenue, uh that what the, the tax revenue that's coming to the town or. Crime rates or.
I'm unclear about that as well.
He doesn't have something specific. For Swan, which I, which I thought maybe that's what the expert was gonna provide, like, here's your estimated income if you build a store that's. Thirty-five hundred square feet and has the, you know, this many plants, or I, I obviously don't know uh the lingo, but uh. You know, is there someone that's gonna be able to provide, like, if you bring to the town of Swan and you locate them in a high traffic area, this is what you could expect for revenue, this is what. You could expect for taxes from there, this is what you could expect if. Uh Highgate and Sheldon and St. Albans all open one simultaneously, like, is there, is, is that the information? That this person is gonna provide, or is it gonna be more generic, this is what, this is what we think happens when they come to Swan?
Well, I, I haven't heard that, I mean, what you're talking, Gordon, is uh market analysis.
Yeah, like, is there a market analysis done?
Yeah, I, he never mentioned that, I mean, he's, now he's not saying he didn't.
Right. Well, what we gotta do is uh, we're gonna have to get back to him and say, hey, we, we're gonna need some of this stuff, we're getting these questions, and we're gonna need that. You know, and I mean, I don't think he will end up with anything specific for Swan, but he might end up with something. In a situation that's similar to Swan, so we have some kind of rough ideas, I doubt if they're gonna be in my, market analysis just for Swan, but uh.
Something, it would just, it would just put uh people on the fence, certainly at much more ease. You know, if they knew, if they had, uh, no, any assumption can be wrong, but at least if you had a educated assumption of what might happen. For us, uh money wise, traffic wise, you know, they, they, there's someone out there that might be able to provide that. Just a suggestion.
On a mission, got it.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to put my hand down, so.
Earl, show us.
What's that?
You'll show them.
Uh, I don't know, is there any other comments on this, I guess uh. Playing forward uh is to try to, we're gonna hit the social media, we're gonna, we're gonna finish trying to put something together on that.
Mm-hmm.
You still gonna do the flyers thing, Ed?
I'm gonna read this.
Well, we're gonna do it, but I guess we're not gonna be putting on people's cars, I guess that's gonna be the consensus. What about their mailboxes?
You can't put it in anybody's mailbox.
No, you can't put them on the mailbox.
I know that, doorway.
But, but here's another, another thought, but I don't know much of a cost, but what about doing a postcard?
Whoever wants to do it, can do it. No, I don't have that, we could find out how much it's gonna cost, but you gotta find out what you're gonna put on the postcard. Are you, that's my question, are you promoting the cannabis, are you promoting the informational meeting to come talk about the cannabis?
The meeting and the vote.
Cause I would concentrate on the meeting, having people come out to get the information.
Yeah.
We can put information out there and probably.
All right.
Two percent's gonna look at it, maybe, hopefully more, but you really need to get people to come to that meeting, that's the key.
I agree.
Okay, so.
And then you can talk about the vote come voting day, everyone knows what day we're gonna vote.
Right. Right. I understand that. Uh, that postcard could clearly state that, you know, we will have an informational meeting, you get, uh, you know, for your questions and stuff, but we also add. On the town's website, if you click here. You'll be able to see some of the same data.
Yeah, that could be.
You could, or if, or if you're gonna put it on the Facebook page, well, you can put it on the town webpage for the people who don't do Facebook. And then if you do it on the town Facebook page. And then, I mean, you could maybe put a link in that little thing to go to those types of information, if people are interested in looking at it. That way, if they wanna look at it, they can, and it's not really something that you are saying you need to read this. It's kind of giving them the option to read it, without trying, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, without. Trying to shove it in their face and saying, this is what it's doing, this is what it's gonna be, give them the option to read the information. But really promote the informational meeting and get the information together that we need for that informational meeting, so that everyone's informed. And we can get the answers to them. I think the key is really the informational. And we can get the answers to them. I think the key is really the informational meeting.
I do.
It's gonna take more than. You gotta put out some information. People gotta have access to it.
Right.
Not just at that meeting.
No, I'm saying, if we do the post on the, our website about the informational meeting, the links they.
Yeah, what are you gonna put?
And then the same thing on Facebook, cause Facebook probably more.
What information are you gonna give out at the informational meeting, okay?
You're probably gonna have information there for them, if you're gonna do all this, I don't think you're gonna get this together within today's already the fifth.
We don't.
To get the total revenue anticipated, what the traffic's gonna be, if there's a market analysis, what is they're going to bring. To the town and time enough to get that out there, but you might have time enough to get it for the informational meeting. You could put on the postcard that. You're doing more research, you're gonna have more information. Here's some of the information you can read in advance or review in advance. But we're working on getting more and more will be at the informational meeting.
And we're gonna be constantly updating that information, so if they go back to the site two days later, there might be something.
And you could put that out there saying, please check, you know, every other day for updates.
And this is a joint informational meeting with the village, so I will call Randy tomorrow and see just what their plans are.
Sure.
They may already have done some of that.
Maybe, maybe, maybe they got some numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
Not true.
But, do we wanna do the postcard?
I think it's good here.
I mean, we can only do it because of the way this vote is, you'd only be able to do it for town residents, right? Because those residents won't be voting.
Um, there's actually, um, I'll have to look up some names, there are companies that will do the postcard. And mail it for one price. You tell them, I mean, politicians do them all the time, and you tell them, well, deliver it here. Uh, they get a little bit foggy because of the zip code.
Yeah, we're gonna miss a few people, but I, I, we're doing it back.
Yeah, right, so, uh, but, uh, yeah, it's gonna, uh, but we can work on that, I'll get the names, we can call. But we need the postcard and the zone, but you wanna say it on it, and they'll print it, do it, every, mail it.
So I'm happy, like I said, to continue to revise the draft that I proposed, and I'll share with everybody. And once everybody, you know, feels that we've come to something that I can, you know, move forward with. It is.
Better, better.
Mm-hmm.
So do we need, should we make a motion to approve mailing, uh, this, this postcard? So that people are aware of this informational meeting and aware of, uh, being able to use the website to get more information on it too, if they want. Do we need to make a motion on it?
Well, uh, we're gonna spend some money.
Yeah, you have to make approval to spend the money that we.
We don't, at this point, we don't know how much that money will be, what that cost will be, but.
Hey, heard back from Mark, you got any comment on doing something like that?
I, I'm personally against doing a mailer for everybody, you're down to two weeks. Before the informational meeting, you're, you're in a tight spot to get whatever information, get the flyer done, get it mailed out. To the registered voter, I'm certainly for putting on our website, Facebook pages. We, we have, you know, put them around businesses, but I think we, we better get moving if you're gonna do something, because the informational meeting is two weeks away.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if, if they do have a company that can do this, I guess if they can do it. If they can do it by next Monday, it should be plenty of time, or next, even next Wednesday, should be plenty of time.
Now, do you know if any registered voters are registered to want to?
Yeah, there's probably about, like, thirty, a little over three thousand.
Four thousand five hundred and something.
That includes the village or just the town?
That includes the village, back, back up the village.
Yeah, I was doing the town.
Oh, you. Alright, I was looking at the total number.
I know, it, it does, but.
But then is the village gonna wanna do a mailing? The kind of.
That would be their, you know, their prerogative, I mean. People are probably gonna wanna, I don't want people coming back after to say, well, we didn't know. And we were all disappointed after town needed. So. We're gonna try something different. That's my, that's the way I feel. You know, we need to put together some kind of a letter that we're gonna put it out there as a board. And then we're gonna do the social media stuff too.
How many registered voters did you say there were? It's about four thousand, well, we get them every day, I'd probably say like four thousand four hundred. Say forty five hundred, it's probably, it might be more than that, but. Yeah, the village and town.
No, just.
So I, if you wanna know how many registered, I'd have to go look and see how many is in the village, I'd have to open up.
Okay, the town is voting for the first time, right? The village is voting to, I don't know, to revote, okay, revote, because they.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, but not the town, the town is just voting for the first time. Very simple, one sentence warning.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
But I, I almost feel that word of mouth and, and flyers are, are gonna be as effective, if not more effective than a mailer. I know personally, you know, it goes into my junk mailbox immediately. I go into the post office regularly and there's tons of direct mailers in the recycling box.
Do you not even turn over your.
No, it's, the license is about one second, the time it takes from their mailbox to their recycle bin, that's it, they might look at it, go.
I mean.
I don't think you're gonna be here making your voting.
Cause that, just on a, on a low end, it's gonna cost, you know, and this is just a rough estimate. At thirty five cents a postcard, we're gonna spend fifteen hundred dollars. And that's just on a really strong maybe, I don't think that, I, I don't think that's a wise way to spend our money.
And the, the other thing is, is the reason why politicians will use it effectively. Um, they'll do three or four or five in your license, like.
Yeah.
So if people keep seeing that show up, I mean, I use it very rarely, because.
Alright, then, uh, we won't do it. It doesn't seem like it, the majority of board has an agreement of it, so we just, we'll go with the other thing that we'll have to put this. Try to get something in the newspapers anyway, a minimum of that, you know? And if somebody from the paper calls you, Brian, or James, they need to answer the questions, you know?
Well, yeah, they need to call, they need, a reporter needs to call, other than on a cell phone, I'm sorry, that is.
Well, the other, here, the other approach would be, we call them.
If you can get hold of them, that's the, uh.
Usually they don't, they, they like news, and this is sort of controversial, shouldn't be a problem.
It, it's difficult, uh, well, I can try calling. And, uh, saying, you know, we just trying to get the people out to vote in this informational meeting, da, 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 and we. You know, you haven't picked up on this, you know? But it's, uh, uh, we'll try it.
Alright. Well.
I'll, I'll check with the village and see what they're doing. Maybe they can, we can do a joint, there's a lot of people don't understand that, how come it's separate votes? That's gonna have to be explained.
Continually.
That's gonna be explained at the informational meeting, I will volunteer as the chair of the board, some authority, to explain why it's being done that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, um, because it is definitely legal reasons, so.
Yeah. Alright, uh, I guess we'll be waiting to see something from you and then, uh, anybody that. Board members that have comments, uh, try to give them to Brian. Somebody can probably.
Quicker the better.
Yeah, the quicker the better. Alright, that's it for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so now you gotta go under, uh. Old Town Business, and you got the two thousand nineteen OX report, I know we got that last time.
You did, anybody had any questions with it, if you read it?
I have no questions.
No. They didn't say anything bad, so we don't worry. Fourth street property status.
Right. Um, I can address that.
Yeah.
Um, as you know, there's that thirty five by thirty five foot, uh, area that, uh, had high level. Certain, uh, hazardous stuff in it, uh, back in two thousand five. They contacted the Atlas Engineering people who were the. Are now the, they're the same people that did the study way back. Um, to see if they could take a look at it and test it, see if the stuff is still there. Uh, received an update today from them that, uh, unfortunately in two thousand nineteen, the rules have changed. And now they're gonna have to do a sh- uh, shallow dig for the whole property, looking for other. Contaminants.
The whole property, not just that area?
Uh, shallow, um, so, uh, because the, the rules all change. And, uh, so I asked her if she could give me the, uh, what the price tag would be, and so she's gonna have to get back to me. She's gotta check further with the EC to see what it is that actually they're requiring they look for. So that's the status. So.
Well, basically, we're, we're on hold until you get that back.
Yeah, yeah, we can't really do anything, because if they're gonna have to go deep, the whole, the whole law. Uh, that could, uh, take some time.
So. Then we don't even know if we can line anybody up to do that, where.
Oh, they'll do it.
Oh, they will?
Yeah, oh yes, they'll do it, but we just don't, I wanna know what the price gonna be.
Oh.
So they, but then she's gonna have to get back.
Alright.
That's the status there.
Will you wear it as well?
No, that's one thing I know I'm gonna find out tonight, the latest on that.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, Gorgon. That's time.
Well. Have everything go good, can you? RTP.
Oh, Earl, Gorgon has a question.
So, sorry, Earl. Uh, you know, Brian, there may be, you might wanna check with whoever you talked to about the brownfield, I mean, that, there still may be ways to. Utilize the lot in such a way that if we're not disturbing the soils, or not digging foundations and using it for. Parking and maybe planting some trees and doing some sort of adult, um. Workout stations or so, pavilion or things like that, that I bet that there may be ways that you could still. Utilize the lot to have something as long as the contaminant isn't disturbed, that might be. Worth looking at if, uh, if the rec plans on doing something, or if there's something that we might be able to do recreational wise.
Okay, we'll check it out. I, I would suggest we get hold of, have you talked to Greta? Have regional plan?
Not recently, not since I got this work.
Friday, yeah, and I was, I would, yeah, that's basically there, Joe.
Okay. And we're gonna go to the MBU sidewalk.
We got RTP.
Oh, RTP.
That's, I was actually gonna say, why don't we let Bethany go, if everyone's good with that, she's been on here a long time, and did that update, then you do the other.
Thank you, Joe.
Alright, you're on, Bethany.
Excellent, and, and thank you for making time for me, um, for an update today, um, on the MBU sidewalk. Um, just to remind you that the town has a, a very large bike and pedestrian grant through the Vermont Agency of Transportation. To construct the sidewalk, design and construct the sidewalk from Mississippi Street. Um, along seventy eight, um, to Thunderbird Drive. Um, and the plan is to construct and design a, a five foot wide concrete sidewalk. Um, approximately thirty two hundred linear feet. Um, and I was here last in October, um, so I just wanted to quickly update you to let you know that things are still moving forward. Um, even though you might haven't heard much, uh, and then let you know what's coming next. So just to let you know that significant things that have happened. Is the town has secured both their state wetlands permit and Army Corps. Um, wetland sign off. And then more notably, the town has received its categorical exclusion. Um, sign off, and the categorical exclusion is a federal, um, environmental review process. And that took about four or five months, um, to get the feds to approve and sign that off. So getting that CE approved was significant, um, the town got that in November. Um, which then allowed your engineer Lamro and Dickinson to begin. Uh, working on the preliminary plans, also called the sixty percent plans. Uh, so though, they're continuing those plans, um, they should have them review and approved by V Trans by the end of June. The, and then the next step is getting into the right of way process. That is where the engineer will quantify both the permanent and cons- and temporary construction easements. That the town has to get in order to construct the sidewalk. Um, and then I, as your municipal project manager, will work with the town to secure any needed easements. From adjacent property owners. So we'll have, you know, through the summer, we'll know more about which easements are needed, and then can come up with a strategy. Um, for, for working with adjacent property owners. But more significantly, I want to let you know and give you a heads up that, uh, Lamro and Dickinson, um, will be. Bringing a, uh, amendment request for additional design funds for you to review in November and May. And there's two reasons for this, um, one is. That as part of the preliminary design process. V Trans, um, has required much more. Engineering work to be done on the existing stormwater system. Um, and so this is being, this is being coordinated through V Trans District Eight and Jim Cota. So essentially, this was not anticipated that this work would include redesigning. That the V Trans own stormwater system. And so that is one significant reason, um, for why additional design funds are needed. And when you see, uh, Lamro and Dickinson's proposal, they'll go in more detail, you know, quantifying that and talking more in detail about that. Um, I will say, um, and not, not to say that you shouldn't have lots of questions for them and, and take a real close look at that. Amendment proposal, but I will say that Lamro and Dickinson's, um, cost proposal going into this. Was much, much lower than other firms. And, you know, up until this point, I feel like the town has gotten good value for the hours that have been put in. Um, but again, I think when we get the, this proposal in May. If you can set some time aside in your select board meeting, I'll be in there in person, and we can kind of go and really look at. Additional funds, um, and where it fits into the budget. The second reason for a contract amendment request is. In mid-May, Lamro and Dickinson is actually closing its doors. Um, after being in business in a, in a, in a strong engineering firm for decades in Vermont. Um, they've gotten to the point where they've had, they've lost engineers through retirement and attrition. And they've been trying throughout the winter to get more engineers on board, and just with the labor market and everything else. It's just, i- it made sense for them to close. The silver lining is that all their project files. And two of their engineers that are working on this project, including Roger Dickinson of Lamro and Dickinson. It are moving to Trudell Consulting Engineers, um, TCE. They are, um, I have a really good working experience with them, um, they have a satellite office in St. Albans. Um, and one of their principal engineers is, it lives in Georgia and was from Richford. You know, so I think they, they do have a Franklin County focused. Um, but that, again, that is the, another reason for. A contract amendment is Lamro and Dickinson won't be in existence anymore. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, more details to follow in May. Um, I don't wanna keep you, cause I know you have lots of more meeting to go, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you have, either about. The contract amendment or where we are in the design process.
Well, you're always questioning, how much money are they looking for?
So I don't have that, that, um, that I will get that, um, from them. You know, their total, just to put it kind of in context, is their total proposal. Um, that they put in about a year and a half ago was forty five thousand. The other firms that put in, their, uh, proposals ranged from ninety nine thousand. To a hundred and sixty three thousand. Um, actually, the, the review committee reviewed Lamro and they were selected before, you know, before we factored in cost. They just happened to be our low. They just happened to be our lowest. Um, I don't think it was a case of them deliberately like underbidding, cause I've looked at what they've spent so far and what they've billed. And it's at least a good twenty or thirty thousand dollars less than what the other firms were proposing in their proposed cost proposal. So, uh, you know, again, yeah, cost is gonna be, how much more do they want, um, is gonna be information that I will get you.
Uh. Mark, you got any questions on this?
The concern of the, the additional costs, obviously being a small town and we budgeted X number of dollars for the next three, four years, um, and it just concerns me that, uh, now we're at this point and I, I know we probably put in some buffer money there, but again, uh, depending on what it is, it is concerning. But we'll wait and see.
And, and to that buffer money, just to, to let you know what buffer money has been built in, um, you, you've built in, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars for, uh, project management services. And it, and N R P C, we're doing, we're doing it for twenty-eight thousand, so about half, so there is some funds there. And then you, you budgeted originally fifty-six thousand plus or minus for engineering. And, um, L and D's, you know, current budget is, uh, forty-six thousand. So you have about ten thousand dollars there. Um, so you have a little bit of wiggle room, but again, I think, I hear you, you need to be conscious, conscious about cost. Um, and especially looking at, once we, once we get that construction estimate from the engineers as part of the sixty percent plans, you know, really looking at where have construction costs gone, um, compared to two and a half, three years ago when the, when the town first put in your grant application.
Right. Yeah, we'll definitely have to be, be very wary and cautious of, of all of it from here on in, definitely.
Well, uh, what meetings do you wanna schedule on, the first or third Tuesday?
Is there one that tends to have a little bit more room in your schedule?
The first one.
The first one.
The first one, so why don't I write in for May tenth?
That's the first Tuesday.
And that way I'll be able to give, um, Lamro and Dickinson a hard day's line.
It will be May third.
May third.
It'll be May third.
May third, first Tuesday.
May third, okay, even though, Harry. And Brian, when do the board packets fill out, the week before?
So the agenda goes out usually, no later than Friday morning of the week before.
Okay. So that'll just give Lamro and Dickinson a hard day's line, um, so we, that, that can be given to Brian to be included, um, in the mailing out to the select board.
And, uh, you have a new, if you, if you're going to a new company now, are they gonna change, yes and then they, are they gonna honor the contract we already had?
So, I mean, that's a good question, I, the, the contract that you currently have is going to be down to zero funds. Um, with, you know, with the additional design work that, that, um, Lamro and Dickinson has done. You know, so they are currently at, they had a balance of forty-seven, so four thousand seven hundred dollars, um, from the last time that they billed and they have not billed since June thirtieth.
Yeah, but is that the end of their contract?
It's not the, it's, it's the end of what the funds are, it's not the end of what, what they said they were going to do in their contract.
Yeah, I'm sure the new consulting firm will, will, oh, there's gonna be some costs coming in from that, definitely.
But I think, and you know, and we could talk a little bit more about this, and I don't know if this is under, you know, contract negotiations realm of things, but we can, you know, I, I feel like, I think T C E will be cognizant of that this is a legacy project and will need to be con- cost-conscious because of that.
But you don't know what they're gonna bring to us for a proposal.
I don't know yet, but we will, we will have it at least a week before your May third meeting.
Okay, I guess, anybody else got any more questions? I guess you're all set for now, but you're on the hook.
I'm on the hook, okay.
We're nervous, we're nervous, okay?
I, I can't afford to make up the difference, I could tell you that, right? I can't be on the hook for that, but I, I can be on the hook if, if we're running low on funds, on, on looking for more funds. And whether that's applying for supplemental grants or whatnot, you know, you could put me on the hook for that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, the, so that, under that one?
No, going back to the R T P grant.
Oh, okay, R T P grant, yep.
That's me.
Yep.
Working with Brian. So, first of all, I wanna say is I wish I had your problem with how to spend a billion dollars, up to a million, we don't quite know the figure yet. And I'll be glad to help spend any portion of that, but you wanna push toward recreation and some of the projects, the Forest Street and the L V R T, uh, Terminus people have been working on, so.
That's the whole issue, Joe.
We'll be glad.
You can spend it, everybody in Swan can spend it.
I, I, I understand, I just wanna tell you, here, help. And, and I, and I'll get in the side as a former select board member and stuff, if there is something I can help with in the process, I am retired and, and doing a little extra help, trying to help the town, you guys give me a holler if you want. So this, uh, R T P, a letter of, uh, intent was sent in and, uh, came back to the town saying, um, go ahead and submit a full grant application, there were a couple stipulations, one was, uh, we have to get the lease for that property from the state prior to the grant submission, so we had, I had been working with the state, uh, it's been fun. Um, they understand the deadline, but I haven't heard from them for a few weeks, so I'll be calling them tomorrow and see where we are with that, I'll pass on the info to Brian. The other thing is this is only up to thirty thousand dollars max. For the, uh, L V R T, um, Western Terminus Parking Area that we talked about, the other grant we went for was about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Now we get the whole thing paid and so on, so thirty thousand dollars, we're not getting, we're not getting a billion, we're not getting it paid. But I wanna talk just for a minute, and I know we've been going for an hour and a half, so hopefully we can keep it short, is what can we do for the thirty thousand? My take is we could, and this would involve, I would say, the highway departments clearing that off and putting stone down and a culvert over to the trail itself. Get some signage and we'd also have to get some permit and most likely we gotta get a wetlands permit, um, achieved, so. I mean, for thirty thousand, we could probably get the clearing done, get the whole gravel put in there so it would be usable, get some signage in there. But what I need, under, you know, I need to know if that's okay with the select board, so we can put that into the actual grant application. I know James isn't here, is, is the highway guy. But I would anticipate, that crew's pretty sharp, you're talking about a week, maybe well over a week's worth of their time to clear that. I drove by it tonight, a lot of it's younger growth trees, they're not grow big diameter, there aren't a few big ones. Uh, most of them got a pretty good lean one way or another, so I'm quite sure they can take them down safely, they do, in the right of ways anyway.
I have one question, Joe.
Yes.
Uh, you're, you're applying for this grant, when would you receive, uh, or when would it get approved, if you're gonna get approved?
I, it's, it's due the twenty-ninth of April, I'm assuming a couple of months, the one in November was originally supposed to be back by January. It went into February a little here. So this one in April, May, June, I would think in June time, right? It might be something we don't even get started this year.
Well, that's, that's what.
Wetlands permit, you know, we obviously aren't doing any of the best of the highways, getting ready for winter storm removal and that sort of thing.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying, because it wasn't a job that we had planned on for this year, but if it's for next year, you know, it's probably something that could be planned for. For sure, that's why I wanna know how long it's gonna take to get all this done, and it doesn't sound like there's gonna be a good chance of it being done this summer.
I, I would think if we heard in June, late June, you're talking two, three months just to get wetlands permit taken care of. Hey, state is very slow on this, I don't mind saying in front of the camera, cause it's like beating it against that wall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh. Anyway, so that's, we've gotta put a grant together by the twenty-ninth if we get this lease piece done, so we gotta work on it. It's, I don't, I, we've got a lot of information, cause we had the other grant completed anyway, so I think we can turn it pretty quick. But I just need to know what it is, if, if, if the board is comfortable.
Well, I kinda, I'll give you my, my thoughts right now, without James being here.
Right.
Uh, and only having, uh, there's four of us here, but I, I just have a concern about doing it without James being here. And, and without talking with Kevin either, and that's something that probably James would do. I don't see it being a problem, I'm pretty sure that they'd be agreeable to it. And if you were, you need that grant application by the twenty-ninth?
Of April, but I'm wondering if, but we got another meeting. Right, but I'm wondering if someone can talk with James prior, if, if the three, if a few, four board members that are listening tonight, they're basically head nodding in concept.
Yep.
You're in agreement, and someone talked with James, James talked with Kevin.
I'm sure, we gotta, James, hopefully he can stop in, he's stuck here, he's gonna have to sign.
Mark wants to try and ask him.
Okay, we'll get Mark.
Right.
Alright, but, alright, Mark Watson, Mark?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it, uh, if Kevin can fit it into the schedule, I think we should continue to make, uh, forward motion progress on this project.
How do you feel that?
I'm also in favor.
I do what?
I know.
Well, the majority of everybody here, even myself, I mean, I, I, I would guarantee that we could do it tomorrow, but, I mean, at some point in time, we can get this done, I'm sure, and it sounds like we'll be able to plan for it, but, because it's gonna take so long to get all this funding and all your permits in place, so. And I, I'm pretty sure James would be okay with it, but I hate to do something without him talking to Kevin.
Absolutely, it's gonna take place.
Yeah.
It's gonna be totally by in on us, and you're all good with that, but just gotta keep it moving, cause deadline's coming.
Okay. Alright, so you'll be in contact with James, and if James is okay, then, uh, even at our next meeting, we can do a formal motion that, you know, the challenge, and that, you could put that into your, your grant, because our next meeting's before the twenty-ninth, the nineteenth, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah, I'll be here. Okay, I'll be working on Brian.
Get treating the.
Yeah, I'll be on her case tomorrow. She's been supportive, some of her staff, some of her staff is not getting a paperwork. Yeah, sure.
There you go. That's all you got on that?
All right.
Okay. Uh, alright, now, Liz is not here, if she's not feeling well, uh, we got a report from Brian.
Well, I got, just very briefly, uh, I got good news. Uh, as you know, last year, um, there was an application made for planning grant to help assist with the right rewriting of the updating of the town plan, and that was declined. I got a phone call last week from, uh, the, uh, people in Montpelier who said that, well, the governor added more money into the budget and that passed, and so we, our grant is back off, uh, for seventeen thousand dollars, there's an email to that effect. And, and our local max is seventeen hundred dollars, which we would have, because we did.
Right, we did.
Um, so I need is, uh, she needs, uh, uh, me to say, yes, the town will accept that grant and then we'll get the process started, so. Um, I have some meeting motions for the town to accept it.
And that was for twenty?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
I make a motion for Brian to accept the proposed state planning grant for seventeen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. A match of one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded, is there any other comments, Mark, did you have something?
No, I'm with you.
Alright, then, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Alright.
Nobody's opposed, so the motion carries.
Okay. Um, and, um, that's, I think, really all I had to report, there, there's something that really probably should be resolved involving real estate.
Yeah. Uh, we, the, no cancellations on Friday with the talk.
Still, but we're supposed to, we, they want us to meet there.
Right at the site.
At the site, and I need to know, is, I know you're gonna be there, and, but, uh, any other board members planning on meeting here? I just need to know, because if there's a quorum, I have to warn it as a meeting.
That's true. Brian, any hearing, what were you saying?
This is to the, uh, site visit at the cheese plant with the Secretary of Agriculture and a couple of members of his staff.
No, I had no intention.
Okay.
Ed?
I, boy, I can't capture that right now, it's back in my mind, telling me I got something going on before I even. I need to know by when.
Tomorrow.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll contact you first tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, probably when you got the game back to you, dude.
Okay, okay.
I'm unavailable in front of you.
Unavailable?
We could end up with three. Could end up with three, so, but if it's just two.
Two, then, then we're all dead.
Yeah, alright, but, but I just know by tomorrow morning, um, it'll give us the forty-eight hours, it's good. Um, okay.
So now we can move on to the highway?
Highway.
And highway grants.
Okay, I've started the process on highway grants, uh, the, uh, there's some forms, uh, basically, I believe these are boiling plate forms, I've met with Kevin, and I just need signatures on them, uh, first of all, that we subscribe to town road and bridge standards. And, um, that you adopt them every year, uh, nothing has changed in that, and I need, uh, signatures.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to approve this, or just sign it?
You need a motion to approve.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve the town road and bridge standards, and there's no changes from what it was.
Changes from what it's here.
From what it's that.
I know.
I'll second.
Alright, motion's been made, seconded, is there any more discussion, Mark?
Good.
Good, alright, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, nobody's opposed, so that motion carries, now we'll sign it right now, right?
Yep. Please.
Okay, now, new truck, but we don't, well, the truck's there.
They have more signatures.
Oh, more?
More, this is the certification of compliance of the town bridge and standards and network inventory, network inventory is up to date, cause I was online looking at it.
So that's, it's a separate motion.
It's a separate motion.
Alright, now I'll entertain a motion to, uh, assert, to approve the certification of compliance for the bridge, for the town road and bridge standards and network inventory.
Loading that motion.
I second.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, nobody's opposed, so this motion carries too. Is that it for signing?
No, we got one more.
Alright, let's go.
This is, uh, the, the annual financial plan, is you're certifying the fund raise, but municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than the sum of at least three hundred dollars per mile for each mile past one, two, and three town highway to this town.
Are we?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I'll entertain another motion for the annual financial plan for the town highways, and.
I will.
I'll second.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded, uh, is there any more discussion? If not, signify, uh, all those in favor, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, the, no one's opposed, so this motion carries soon.
Kathy agreed with me on that. Oh, yeah, we're definitely.
Okay, new truck. Um, just drop it here.
It's, it's here, I didn't know if James had something in it, but it is here, I looked inside it and has.
Does it really look nice?
Yeah, it hasn't been marked yet, or at least when I saw it, it was two weeks ago.
But you didn't get a chance to drive it.
I don't have a C D L.
You still think around the park a lot?
I can, I can drive it and pod and it's the backing up.
Oh. Okay, now, uh, we got any other necessary business?
Liquor license.
Well, that's, that's a separate thing. We have to hear in this.
Um, well, I got one more thing to say. Um. Memorial Day parade's coming up.
Yep.
And, and all of this, they wanted to put a highway truck in to get out of the crash. We got time between them.
Well, we got that new truck, you, we're putting that in.
Well, okay. That's fine, I'll ask Kevin to make things.
Mark has.
Mark? Yeah, uh, Memorial Day parade, uh, yeah, our task is to put the truck in, James. Uh, James, Joel, Adam and myself are working on the parade, so you'll probably hear more of that coming here pretty quick.
Okay.
But the truck, our task is to put the truck in.
Okay, sounds good. Um, and also the electronic sign issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you get it through you?
No, the, uh, the village electric, a few holes will be taking the sign apart. Take, do a test to see if, they think it, the people I spoke to on the phone think it's the controller. And, um, the, uh, and that's the case, that has to be replaced. Uh, it's obviously cheaper if we can do it locally.
Yeah.
Because they, their nearest tech is in Boston or Syracuse, so, um, and then the other thing is, is the availability of the part. I'm going to have no idea of the cost, but the first thing is to check it and see that it's.
Oh, you're still working on it?
It's still being worked on, yeah. Uh, we saw just for the people listening, that's why the sign is blank, um, if you drive by. Um, that's what, that's it.
All right, then, now, uh, if somebody wants to move to recess, this select board meeting in convene the liquor control board meeting.
I will make a move to enter recess and enter into the liquor control board.
I second.
Motion. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Everybody, if, if you're in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that, nobody's opposed, so that motion carries, uh, what do you got, Kathy?
I have two renewals, one is Hog Island Market and one is Caitlin's Creations, also known as Mother Hubbard's Bakery. There's been no violations on either one, so it's just a straight criminal law for both of them.
Okay, so we want to make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve liquor licenses for Caitlin's Creation LLC, which is known as Mother Hubbard's Bakery and Hog Island Market.
I second.
I'll second those. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, nobody's opposed, so the motion carries. And this is all we got. Now we can adjourn this and go back to our other meeting.
And you need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn. Liquor control board.
Then motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, that's, we're back into our regular meeting, oops. And now we're getting down to correspondence. Did we have some correspondence or we all?
Uh, no, the correspondence we had, we covered with other issues that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking, we probably already hit it off. Uh, any other public comments?
Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, we've got some upcoming events, so we always do. Uh, cemetery commission meeting on seven P M. at the town offices on four eleven. On four fifteen, which is Good Friday, uh, town offices and operations will be closed. Tuesday, four nineteen, there'll be the regular, uh, select board meeting, which can be attended by Zoom at seven P M., seven P M. at the Swan Town offices. Thursday, the twenty-first, there's going to be a joint town and village informational meeting for the special town and village vote at seven P M. At the village complex and the vote for the town and the village is going to be on whether cannabis will be sold either in the town or in the village or both. Tuesday, four twenty-six, a special town vote and special village vote for the cannabis, cannabis issue. Plus, this is important, probably more, way more important, is a Mississauga Valley School District vote. Uh, and the polls will be open from seven A M. to seven P M. at the Swanton Village Complex at one twenty-first street. And then on Wednesday, four twenty-seven, the planning commission will have its meeting at six P M. at Swan Town Office at one Academy Street. Uh, and that's it for the event? Oops, no, we have one on Thursday, four twenty-eight. Development Review Board at, at six P M. two at the Swan Town Offices here on one Academy Street. Now, do we have need for executive session?
We do.
We do?
We do. Well, yeah, but just for a few minutes, it won't take long and I, there won't be any action needed afterwards.
No action needed after?
No, so it, everybody.
Everybody can kind of head out then?
Yeah, yeah.
So I move that we find that we enter executive session for the select board to receive confidential. Real estate personnel information for which the premature disclosure of it to the general public would clearly place the select board and others at a substantial disadvantage.
All right, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
And seconded, uh, I'm assuming there's not going to be any discussion. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the ayes have it, so that motion's been made and now based on.
I, I move that based, based on the just made findings, that premature disclosure, we place the select board and others at a substantial disadvantage, we enter executive session.
I'll say it. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I think so. But, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so we are in executive session.